It's time to call the meeting to order. If we can have roll call, Sandy.
Counselperson Brenney?
Here.
Brenney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Here.
McGinty?
Yes, here. I'd like to welcome the guests at the meeting and appreciate your attendance here as well as the press. The press is important to communicating what goes on here to the citizens, so we appreciate that. Are there any conflicts of interest with regard to anything that's on the agenda this evening?
No.
That being noted. And then we'll consider under item number three, Consent Agenda A through I. You have that in front of you, and I believe everyone has a copy of the agenda there, so if you want to review that. If there's anything that needs further discussion at any length, we can always move that item off the consent agenda and consider it later in the meeting.
I would move passage of Consent Agenda items A through I.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on consent of Agenda A through I? If not, we'll have a vote, Sandy.
Counselperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brenney?
Here, yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion, Perry?
And I might note, too, that Jerry Mayer with Cornruff Frieders and Mayer Associates will be reporting on the audit, and when she arrives, we'll move her ahead in the agenda. That's under item 6A, so that it's going to be flexible as to when she gets here. So with that in mind, we'll move on to projects. Sac City facade project, item number one, consideration of approving the CD BG drawdown number 19 in the amount of $16,236.
I would move to approve the drawdown number 19 in the amount of $16,236.
I'll second. Are there any, is there any further discussion questions? That being the case, there are none, so we'll have a roll call, Sandy.
Counselperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion, Perry?
Item number 2A, consideration of approving Cornerstone Commercial Contractors Inc.'s bill in the amount of $25,448.62.
There's a progress meeting tomorrow, so if anybody's interested in an update, they'll check with me tomorrow, at the end of the day tomorrow, I should have more.
What time's the progress meeting?
It's from 1:00 to 2:00 tomorrow at the library, because we have our gas Iowa utility, IUB is doing the gas audit in here tomorrow, so we've got that meeting at the library instead.
How's, any updates on the facade project?
I know they've been working quite a bit at Mooney's, quite a bit of change there. There's, I think they're a little behind on where they wanted to be from a window and door standpoint, but they are making progress at this point. I'm looking for a new timeline from them at our meeting tomorrow.
I would move to approve Cornerstone Commercial Contractors Inc.'s bill in the amount of $25,448.62.
I'll second.
Are there any questions or comments?
This is an actual representation in your estimation of what they have done?
Correct, yes.
Anything else? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Counselperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion, Perry?
Item number 3A under projects is consideration of approving the city's portion in the amount of $5,089.72.
I'll make a motion to approve the city's portion of $5,089.72.
Second. Any further comments, questions? There being none, we'll have a roll call, Sandy.
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Motion, Perry?
Okay, item number four, consideration of approving the city's advancement of the CD BG funding in the amount of $16,236.
This is all part of the schedule, it's pre-planned to pay, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the advanced payment of CD BG funding amount of $16,236.
I'll second that. Any comments, questions?
So we are on schedule, and Adam, with the funding that's coming out, it's coming out the way it's supposed to be.
Well, "way it's supposed to be" is another term. It's taking CDBG, Sandy, what did you figure recently?
Two months.
Yeah, almost eight weeks.
To reimburse us?
Yeah.
Really? So are we at a point where we need to, is it activating?
We're watching it, but right now, we haven't needed to.
Okay, good.
Any other comments? If not, we'll have a roll call, Sandy.
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
Motion, Perry?
Item number 5A, consideration of advancement of private funding in the amount of $4,122.90.
So there was, there was no, we're advancing the whole thing, there was no, nothing left?
It's not, I mean, it's close enough that qualifying as an advancement is safe enough. I mean, you could technically say, I just received a check, a second half check from one of the property owners, so, I mean, you can kind of play those games, but it was real close, Bruce. It was just easiest to over, if anything, it's a slight overestimation of how much we're advancing.
I would move to approve the advancement of private funding in the amount of $4,122.90.
No, second it.
There being none, Sandy, you want to call a roll?
Counselperson Brenney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
I'm like, wait a minute, I just said yes already. Motion, Perry?
Usually I have to complain when I'm doing the list.
Just checking.
At the opening of the meeting, we discussed having Jerry Mayer from Cornruff Frieders Mayor and Associates, PLC, to visit with the council about our audit, and you might notice that Jerry did compose a lengthy letter summarizing the results of our audit. With that in consideration, and Jerry's being here, we would like to have you present your thing, and feel free, once you're done presenting, to excuse yourself. In fact, we will excuse you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That would might go all the way down when you sit on it.
Why am I having my hat over there?
It's not going all the way around.
There you go.
You're bored.
I'm sure it is.
Like our budget, you're shrinking before our regular care.
Oh, it's okay.
She could get a layer out on the table this week.
It's just my size.
Might get shoulder injuries from having your arm on the table.
Okay, let's come, I'm going to do a brief report of everything we did and the procedures, you know, that we do, and then I'll kind of go over any kind of recommendations or some, you know, things I said, you know, had, and then I'll have to go back to work, and people come picking up their tax returns for either night, tonight. And so first I have to apologize, normally I'm here in March, so I give you before the actual deadline, you know, March 31st, but things didn't work out real well as I expected at office, so we had a little turnover and we had some people that have had their stuff out by March 31st, there's a lot of new, well, it's not new, but there's SEC guidelines where reports have to be uploaded at a certain deadline, or a bond rate might be affected, so we want to make sure we had all the lower deadlines, you know, first. And I think the, you know, we probably, you know, just been working, we got into things that get stricter here and there, because I think some people invested in city or school district bonds and lost their money, so they're trying to, you know, get, make sure things are more current, to fit information. And one of the new things, kind of as a result of certain things, there's something new this year that we went through, it's called GASB 68, which has to do with pension liability obligation.
Page 41.
Yeah. What that, what that's about is the city Sac Cities participates in IFRS, and I've heard everybody talk about IFRS and contributions to the pension plan, or it's a pension, it's a state pension plan that everybody's a member of, all the schools, all the cities, there's some county hospitals, you know, I mean, the police have a, you know, a different partner and so on, and this GASB, which is governmental county standard board, looked at, looked like, oh, well, really, everybody should put their share of the liability on your books, because it's not owned by anybody, it's just a joint consortium, so the state auditor's office worked with IFRS, and they did their own audit, and they ended up paying what they call an unfounded pension liability of about $4 million, $4 billion dollars, give or take. And so then, everybody, as a cruel basis, has to report their percentage share on your books, but since your cash basis, I don't have to, you know, put it as a liability, just disclose it, so there's, it kind of shows your liability on page 41. So basically, the city Sac City shares $478,000 of that liability, and just for information only, because the state law right now says they can't upgrade the funding, they can, by law, I think it says they can increase it by one percentage, you know, either way, but they can't go and assess you $478,000, so here you go. So I think it's just, we have to disclose it because like, it's a contingency that, you know, that there is some liability there, but they think, IFRS think it's pretty good because they've got 87% of their pension funded for the future, and that's all, you know, by estimate and actuary evaluation. But on your day-to-day operations, it doesn't affect anything, any of your budgeting or anything. That was something new this year, I just wanted to point out. And on that, we went, we came here for, like, two of us came here for about three days, and we did, went through the records, early before we came, I put together, put together this annual financial report, you know, for, from the books, and what that is, that's an annual financial report that's sent to the state, and when I do that, I make sure that your cash, I take the beginning cash plus the receipts, less the dispersments, equals any cash, so that goes through the records, and then not only does it do it by, in total, but we go by fund. You know, so that's why, you know, sometimes you take into account like the transfers to make sure, you know, when something got transferred, and so all that balanced out, no problems there. And then when we came and did regular field work, we did, some audit procedures we do is, we do outside confirmations with your banks, we write letters to all the bank, and the debt, make sure the debt, you know, matches their records, the cash in the bank matches, the CDs, we write to the state of Iowa, make sure all the receipts, they said they gave you matches, like their road use, your local option sales tax. We look at your utility bills, and if your ordinance says you can pay $5 per 1,000 gallons, you know, that's what the customers get charged. And then we look at some of your dispersments, if there's a bill written, you know, if it's supposed to be for police, you know, car repair, it's put in police and not sewer fund, you know, that's in the right category, and approved by the council and publishing authority, because besides just the looking at financials and the numbers, we also look at code compliance, are you doing things in accordance with the Code of Iowa or of Grant and Green Act, if a grant award says you can always spend, you know, the federal dollars, like your facade grant for certain things, that's what you're spending it on. So it's a little more involved than like a business audit, so just kind of let you know some of the procedures, you know, that we do. We also kind of review all the controls, just to see if, you know, there's some controls in place to prevent something from being miscoded or, you know, misappropriated, I guess. And when it get all done, we put together this audit report. So that's in a nutshell, it kind of explains the audit opinion and the procedures in the first couple pages of the report. And then we get all done, we put it in a audit report format, and on page 12 and 13, gives you like the overall view of the city. And that includes all the funds, so the gas, the sewer, and the airport, and you can see it had, the city has $1 million of cash at the end of the year, and it had $1 million at the beginning of the year, so it had like an overall loss of like $48,000. So pretty much that's pretty straight break even, so, and that's kind of the goal, is not to, you know, or have some, have some cash on hand, but not to overtax anybody. And that just shows that, the reason they have this format is, on the left side shows all the dispersments, and then there's some direct income that goes against it. It's like if you look under, like, culture and recreation, the city spent $200,000 in culture and recreation, but then you got some direct charges, and that would be like the pool receipts, or library charges, you know, are in that budget category, and there'd be like a few small grants, and if you go over to page 13, there's a negative $171,000. And the reason the format's like this is that shows that the city's property taxes, local option, it helps support those activities, because they're not self-supporting, so, and that's the reason for this, you know, format. So if your tax constituents or they want to know where their tax dollars are going, that's why this format's, you know, and say, okay, for every, we're supporting the, you know, police and the fire, we're supporting, you know, the roads, and we're supporting this by this many dollars, because some people do ask that, and I've worked with some cities, you know, when you talk about the shrinking budgets, where they do a little bit of what I call net budgeting, where you take your, like on a pool, the pool's the easiest, because you see you got some receipts, and you got some dispersments, and then you got a net figure, and the net loss, and I mean, I haven't seen a pool that made money yet, but you take the net loss, and that's the property taxes they're asking for. And so then you try to work with your department heads and say, hey, this is how much money you have that the property taxes will support, so you can spend more money, but you got to have some more income up on top, you know, because we only got so much, you know, property taxes to go around. So that seems to work pretty well. But that was just some ideas I just kind of threw out there, if you're new. And then in the front, Adam did this management discussion and analysis, so it says on page 8, and that kind of shows you, it shows you like a little breakout of differences, the one year to the next. Because the first, the first page here, on page 8, that's the, your governmental funds. And you can see there's like $1.5 million, last year's was $1.7, and the main difference is there's some more transfers, you're probably paid for some capital projects, and then you can see the, well, there's a lot more public works is spent in the year before, because there's some, you know, road projects with that money you got from the state, from the state, but it's kind of a nice way to, you know, do a comparison from one year to the next. On page 9, it's a whole comparison of enterprise funds, the water sewer. It really didn't change too much, I mean, some of the revenue went down, but expenses, you know, for the direct cost stayed about the same, it all, utilities is all kind of depends on the weather, how dry it is, wet it is, cold it is. And we do kind of go through a, like, analysis on the utilities to see if it kind of makes sense from one year to the next, so I'll look at like the net profit, you know, on the gas, to see if that stays real consistent, like, you know, with your purchase gas adjustment, to see if that stays consistent, and then we kind of look at the records to see there's some reconciliation of income to show, here's your beginning receipts plus, beginning balances plus receipts, less all the dispersed, less all the payments, gives you like the ending accounts balance, kind of do your little control procedures. So any questions so far? Okay, then I'll skip ahead down to the back where I had what I call comments and recommendations.
Page 57?
And the first couple of ones I've had, every year, there's like some segregation of duties, and we do a pretty good job, but there's some things that you could, you know, you know, to be a complete segregation of duties, you probably have to have like, take turns like balancing a bank account, or having somebody sign off on reconciling the bank, rotate all the jobs, like if you look at utilities, you know, DeeDee does most of the utilities, because she does the billing and, you know, posts some of the, you know, most, majority of the receipts, other people do too, but you can kind of look, possibly the council could be involved and, you know, come in and, you know, sign off on bank reconciliations, you know, if you want to, or, you know, if there's something, I've had one city one time, you know, their insurance company had a little problem with the segregation of duties comment, so we sat, we sat down and figured out how everybody could, you know, sign off on everything, so no one was doing anything dysfunctional themselves, so that satisfied the insurance company. So if that ever comes up, just kind of let me know, and I can, you know, kind of go through procedures, see if there's some, some way you can, you know, sign off on everything. The second one is just putting this booklet together, technically according to auditing standards, the staff here is supposed to have this booklet all put together in this format, I'm just supposed to come in, you know, audit the financial statements plus the footnotes, and then realistically, that doesn't happen in the law of Iowa, so. I'm not saying that governing audit standards are, how do I call that, applicable, but they're written for big-sized cities, you know, big-sized entities, and there's no such thing as difference between little and small. And then I just had, and I was telling you earlier, we going through like the compliance issues, and there's a couple areas that were over budget a little bit, that was like debt service, that was on page.
It was like $500 or something like that.
It wasn't much, just, debt service was $500, and capital projects was over like $156, can't remember what that was for, but.
That worked.
Yeah.
Probably the airport.
I think it was the airport.
Yeah.
I think it was the airport. But, and that's all that, I mean, there's no, I mean, it's not really any consequence that we just comments over budget, and everybody, who knows, it's, you're supposed to stay under budget, the hardest part is, on city budgeting, you're supposed to budget by function, not by fund. So you've just been through your budget process, and I think they kind of told you that, so. And then we just look, one, code compliance things, we make sure all the minutes are published, you know, on paper.
Jerry, if you don't mind, I just wanted to step back for one second. 2B, 2B-15, you talked briefly with me about it, but I kind of wanted the council members to hear your comments associated with, with the non-for-profit entities. Would you mind sharing with them your concern there?
Yep, that's the next one on the list, and I saw, there was, I was just looking at this, just as, you know, kind of as a overall thing, is that you have, you have some yearly, I call them allocations to some nonprofits, and the Code of Iowa always wants you to look at, is that expenditure for public purpose, is that for the, you know, public purpose of the city, you know, because we're a city here, and we're trying to do what's best for our citizens. And what they're trying to get at is, you don't want to do anything to benefit like yourself personally, you know, so, what I was kind of thinking is, I mean, I really don't have a lot of problem with, you know, with, you need like the daycare, or you need like the recreation center, because there's a place for the kids to go, and you need to draw people into town, you know, and make sure Sac City's a viable community in the future, but my concern was it should maybe just be documented that this is why, we're doing it this way, so someone can't come in and say, it's a really, really gray area in the Code of Iowa, there's not like a right, it's just like the IRS tax code, it's not really.
And on your recommendation, we passed a resolution associated with this newest budget, and I'll be sharing that with you next year to see if you think it's.
And that's the reason I brought it up, like, whether someone came to, in the Sac City and said, well, they want to start a daycare center, and they say, well, you support this nonprofit, well, you know, don't need, you know, and you don't want to have someone or another business, or, you know, just say, well, can you support us? I mean, there's other economic incentives you can, you know, do with property taxes, and, you know, what they, they building a building and stuff, but that was my concern, was that if another for-profit came in and was wanting to do something similar, or another, you don't want to get every single nonprofit coming into the city too, which they probably do anyway, but that was the main reason I wanted to put that in there, since the history and the, and conflict changes every so often, the mayor changes every so often, so.
So we just need a summary stating our reasons why, and?
We passed a resolution along with the Raj, saying that we found these, these causes to be of.
Public interest.
A public interest and benefit to the city, and therefore we're awarding things, I mean, is that?
I think that should be filed out.
If not, she'll tell us about it. I guess.
Got to have something, right?
Any wording that you'd suggest to, where we can legitimately exclude, like you say, a private business coming in and asking for, you know, similar support, or is it?
By my ass, maybe you just ask the, you can ask your attorney, I can give Adam some code sections, what the code sections are.
Thank you.
There's a little bit more legal definition, because there have been some, some cases where they've gone to like, not the Supreme Court, but that's what they call it, the state, there's a, well, they, whatever, the attorney general's opinion, because they had entitlement parties for someone that's been there for three years.
I know one of them, I've seen in the past, is having groups like art councils or things like that, give donations to a student going to Germany to study art, or something like that, and whether or not that is in the public's interest, or if that's a gifting, and you see those type of questions asked.
Yeah, once more, yeah. Or they even have things where you have a family, a company picnic, you know, I think that's like, not in the best interest possibly of the city. Or flowers, you know, like if Adam's wife passed away, you know, you're not supposed to send him flowers, because that's not in the public interest, even though you think important morale shouldn't be, but, they've been, stuff, they've gone to attorney general for stuff like that, so I thought, just to protect yourself, it'd be nice to have something. And then I think that was about it, then I just had, well, except the last one, on the last page I had, the revenue bonds, you got to make sure you didn't quite get to the 110%.
I believe we'll make it this year, if this can be.
But it answers, you've been working on, it takes a while, because once you earn a lot, it takes a while to get the rate increase, and that's just to help keep your bond, you know, rate, interest rates down. And then I think a couple of times a minutes were rolled, they were published within fifteen days. And that's hard to do with, there's no exceptions in the code for a week. Except some things aren't written for smaller, smaller places.
And you typically want a motion, accepting the findings of the audit?
Right.
Yeah.
Does anyone want to entertain a motion to that effect?
I would move to accept the report from the auditor.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion or questions?
So thank you for all your.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
See you next February.
Yep, thanks for having me. On end of hour, like I said, I apologize for, next year, try to get here by March, but we did get into the state on time, so we let that get in, so.
Just to be official, we'll have a vote.
Counselperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion, Perry?
Good, thank you very much.
Brenney?
It does create some confusion.
It does. Sandy does a good job of enunciating her, her words.
They criticize me when I have to do it, so.
Oh no, I forgot the book. Yeah, I got her, I got her a little trouble, like, she was gone that day, so I snuck her annual ledger back with me so I could have. Yeah, I got her, I got her a little trouble, like, she was gone that day, so I snuck her angel ledger back with me so I could have to do my footnotes. I'm not supposed to bring it today, I'll UPS it.
But, but don't, don't feel bad, Jerry, because.
Hey, maybe Bruce can bring it.
You know, I, I work at Grace with a church in Fort Dodge.
Oh yeah, I've got it.
Joan, send, send it.
You know Joan, right?
Yeah, send it with Joan, I'll, she'll be, I use Google to know.
She'll be, yeah, she'll be using Google to know that.
Send it with Joan and I can, I can bring it back on Thursday.
Okay.
Don't, don't feel bad, the airport, uh, documents or files sit over here for a month, because I thought they were left here by the community foundation, organization. And so I just left it in here for them to pick up, and a month later I finally opened it up and saw it was the airport stuff, and so I got back to the airport. Hey, you might want to come get your stuff, it's been sitting here a month.
Yeah, now if you send that with Joan or just drop it.
Yeah, I'll send that with Joan, yeah.
Or just drop it off at the church, I'll give it to you.
Oh yeah, 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 she has, I know she has. Okay, sorry.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, thank you. Have a good year, sounds all, it'd be nice to.
So we'll move on to item number five, citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. And please state your name and your, there's a three-minute limit for.
John Ninn is my name. I wasn't here for a meeting, this hasn't been brought up, but, um, last minute he get, willing to take, um, some city money to help tear some of his houses down. Roughly thirty years ago, I was ordered to take down a garage. Nobody offered me any money, I, I was told to do it. They also told me how much a certain person to do it for, you do it for you. Now if I can't, some of his owners be responsible for these other buildings.
Well, I think the majority of them, John, are, are not.
Yes, be said. I, I wouldn't ask if I had the money neither.
Yeah, but they're not here, they don't, they're absentee, a lot of them, a lot of them haven't paid their taxes for fifteen years and trying to get them to do something with, when they won't pay their tax. I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I know what you're getting at.
They, they are served, aren't they, to take it down?
Yeah.
They are responsible for it, I mean, but they're serving.
They get served legal papers to take it down.
My understanding in the way.
I'm sure they ain't paid, I mean, it's all verbal, but I would flat told.
My understanding in the process, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know all the finer details of it, but I think at some point there becomes a point where the city can either take the property, tear it down and assess it, or ask the courts to fine them, um, and request the court, court order them to take action on the property, and then you might be able to hold them in contempt of court. So, I mean, I, I don't think there's been a case of one getting head, taken to that step in our county in some time, but.
I think what does happen, when the city does take the property, take the building down, it goes back onto the taxes for that property, so the property owner is charged for it. You know, whether they pick, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Whether they pay for it or not, you know, I mean, it's, um, and we're really glad that we have citizens like you who are willing to comply with take the building down. I think probably some of the people would have a different response, and it might involve a salute with one finger or something like that. And, um, I think that, you know, it's great, I wish.
It actually just happened with two more houses too, Jerry Yule bought one and tore it down on his own. And then Hughes bought the other one and tore that down on their own too. So there are some people that are doing it on their own.
I think we have either signed off on or they're in the process, whether it's us or someone else. There's going to be between ten and twelve houses taken down between, in the year two thousand and sixteen, based on what we know right now.
That's good.
A lot of the, you know, you know, this, depending on the city funding or do I tell this, or this private property.
Yeah, none of us wants to do that, and I think it, but maybe by doing it, we also are benefiting the, doing the public good. If we, if people say, okay, they're going to come in and do it and charge me for it, some of the other people may jump forward and do it on their own. I think we went for a number of years without people thinking that there was any threat, that it would happen, well, so, you know, and if you decided I don't want to tear down my garage, you know, then you have a standoff.
Now what would happen if I didn't, you know, refused to, I don't know, but I was told so-and-so do it for so much money, for, I didn't know you tried your own performance.
Right, and that's, that's great, we're really glad you did, and, um.
A responsible property owner would do.
Yeah.
I'd be really with that back neither time.
You know, Adam, would it, I mean, is it reasonable that we go the route of, of fining people and, you know, isn't that go on a public record where they would be held responsible if, if, you know?
I would think that the appropriate place for this to be discussed, Bill, would be for the representative from planning and zoning to take it back to planning and zoning and discuss it with them.
I think in the past experiences, they've tried that route, and they keep giving them thirty days, thirty days, thirty days, nothing ever materializes. And then all of a sudden, after a period of time, it's, it's interested loss in it, and then another party comes along, starts all over again with the new planning and zoning, and they go through the same thing. Right now, I will have to give them credit, they're, they're going through the motions, it may not be the most appropriate way we'd like to have things done, but it's doing it according to the law, serving them, giving them the opportunity, and then demolishing the property. Unfortunately, to better our community, that's what we're going to have to do. Even though it does cost us money, I think in the end it's going to be an asset to our community.
You know, I, I happened to, this was several years ago at one of the Iowa league meetings, that I think it was the city of Marion does a very good job of serving that, taking it to court, and they've used some techniques where they've cured the judges of repeatedly doing the thirty day or how many days notice. It's kind of called them on it, and, uh, I'll see if I can find those notes or something.
That'd be good.
And of course, uh, in May, you're going to have the visit from the lady that you spoke about from region twelve.
Okay.
That's going to cover some of that issue.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Thanks for being a responsible property owner.
Any, anyone else on the citizens' opportunity? If not, we'll move on to, uh, six B, consideration of hiring pool staff. And, Adam, how do you want to handle this? But Kyle?
Kyle should be the one to present this.
Okay, Kyle, your.
Okay, um, I know we had. You guys rigged this terrible. I'm surprised you didn't put a buzzer in there.
That way you don't take so long.
Yeah, we're done with you. Three Xs, that's real good. Okay, um, well, I, I explained, um, with Larry Burley and, and Teresa, that, um, when I was adding up how many lifeguards I had, I'm, without the fifteen-year-olds, I am actually down one lifeguard. With that, with that said, uh, last year the lifeguards even got overworked, and that's what started the whole people getting called in and working over forty hours and so on and so forth, even though it didn't apply to, uh, the nineteen and eighteen-year-olds, those are the ones we got called in on. And they focused on our fifteen-year-olds, um, with the rule that they can't work more than four hours with a half-hour break. Uh, it's nine o'clock, not seven o'clock, they can't work past nine, um, once it's Memorial Day, I think that's when that, when that starts.
Yeah, there's changes at different points in the season.
Yeah, it changes the nine o'clock past Memorial Day. My proposal would be to, instead of going through all of the, my proposal will at least have fifteen-year-olds work three and a half hours, uh, and that's it. And I can either shift them three and a half at the beginning or three and a half at the end. Because if they're going until nine, the pools only open till eight. Obviously, some of those times when we have a swim meet, those fifteen-year-olds will not work that night, because sometimes those swim meets go past nine. But if we cut it off at three and a half, that means we don't have to worry about break, and we don't have to worry about going over forty minutes, or forty hours a week. Uh, and we don't have to worry about them clocking out five minutes past like four hours and five minutes.
For that to work, Kyle, how feasible is it for them to fill in for someone else then? If, in that type of case, I'm just trying to play.
I have enough, I have enough fifteen-year-olds to have most of them as fill-ins. Um, and I'm going to give my full-time status to my first, the ones I had last year, because they're all trained up. And let's be honest, a lot of fifteen-year-olds didn't want to work eight-hour days anyways. But it's just, it's a matter of, it's a matter of telling, uh, telling our senior guards of sixteen above, saying that they can only, if you're going to have a fifteen-year-old fill-in for you, it can only be a three and a half hour shift. Then they can't work an eight-hour shift.
So do you have an employee handbook that would articulate that to them?
Yeah, yep. So.
And so.
Then we had a.
The viol, the violation of that would result in termination of both employees?
Immediate termination, yep.
Yeah, uh, you know, a written policy like Bruce had mentioned, and maybe even have them sign off on it so that, that you have an initials, that yes, they did in fact receive it, and, and probably have a meeting ahead of time uh, with all of them, so that they have a clear understanding of what's expected. You know, we can't afford to have a.
Another mishap like that?
Another mishap, you know.
No, I understand the risk.
So, so they have to understand the situation and sign off on it, and we have to have, you know, a, a written trail, you know, proving our efforts in case we would run into any questions.
Unfortunately, even that does, would not cover a violation, because they don't care how it happened, they just care that it happened.
They just care it happened, yeah, yeah.
Well, my problem is, is how are the sixteen-year-olds going to be responsible enough to follow these guidelines to the letter?
The fifteen-year-olds.
Those sixty, sixteen-year-olds that are calling the people in if, you know, for a replacement or whatever, I mean, I can see how the hours can get flipped around for the replacement, people coming in, and it would be awfully easy to, you know, to violate those particular rules, and whether it's accidental or intentional. You know, if, if there is a problem and we are fined again, it's going to be a lot more than what it was originally, and uh, there's going to be a lot of the extra people in town, our housing and everything, it's going to lose money in our budget, because that, that worried me tremendously.
Yeah, and it worries me too. Uh, and I know, and I don't expect you to take a risk, but with, if you don't hire fifteen-year-olds, you don't have enough staff.
I was going to say, but also not having enough staff is not going to be good for our.
You're going to overwork, I mean, you're, you're cooperating four hours is, is, uh, fifty-six hours a week, something, roughly around there. I have eight lifeguards that I would be able to staff, um, at the beginning of the summer. Four of those lifeguards are softball players, and I won't see them until midsummer except for the weekends. And the rest of them are fifteen-year-olds.
And we have a drill team one.
And they have drill team ones.
There's camps.
And if, if any of my eight life, my, my eight, um, I'd say my core lifeguards go on vacation, go on a trip, you're going to be short-staffed. And so if I can't fill them in with these fifteen-year-olds or.
So could you put a policy in place that if they need, if they need to find a replacement, they cannot call one of the fifteen-year-olds, they can only call.
That's what I'm thinking too, is you can't call a fifteen-year-old for a replacement? For, for the older.
The fifteen-year-olds can only work their scheduled hours.
Yes, yep.
And that's it. If you need a replacement, you cannot call on one of the fifteen-year-olds.
Yep.
So now, if.
I can live with that.
I've got, I've got a.
Makes it less sticky.
I have, I have the old, the old one in front of me, some of my old, the newest thing at home. How many fifteen-year-olds do we have?
All the ones that, one, two, three, four, I have five, I have five.
So there are five, so looking at this, look at their, la, last year you had, you operated on what, thirteen, fourteen guards?
Um, more than that.
Thirteen, I thought it was.
We added.
We had eleven and we added two to get to thirteen.
We added two, we get thirteen, yeah.
So you've, so you've got like twenty names here.
Yeah.
Did your additional two you were expecting?
There's a lot of them, like you said.
You thought there might be more?
They're in drill team there.
Right, I mean, I.
My additional two.
Yeah, you'd mentioned you thought there might be more.
Um, I, let's see, I'd put them on there anyways, Sydney Richardson. I don't have her application yet, but she worked for me last year, I know she's certified lifeguard and.
She'd be there all the time.
Yeah, she'd be there.
Is Megan Cook going to be around?
I don't know. She applied, so she applied for me, so, and Sydney's sending me her, but Sydney doesn't get there till mid. Uh, Sydney doesn't get there till mid, uh, midsummer.
She's going to be gone for a week.
Well, with those, with those twelve, twelve lifeguards, it was, it was very difficult to staff them. That, that's why, I mean, you look at someone like Jordan Fisher, Ally, Ally Mountenocher, um, uh, Maddie. I mean, they're working over forty to staff that pool, you know, no nineteen-year-old, eighteen-year-old should have to work.
Yeah, one other question I have, so if the five fifteen-year-olds are working three and a half hour shifts, and I think our current policy is that they have to work a hundred hours in the summer in order to get their training reimbursed. What, are we, are they, we need to make sure that they're aware of that, so by those, I got my lifeguard training and I got ninety-six hours. I mean, I mean, I think that's something that we probably need to articulate and spell out to them pretty carefully.
I think if we put this kind of rule in place, um, and this is just off the cuff, but I would apply it to both years. Because their lifeguard cert lasts two years, right? So if they, let's say they work fifty hours this year, and we'll be sixteen next year, a hundred plus, then pay for their lifeguard cert, but I don't know.
How does the policy read on that?
The policy reads the other way.
Hundred hours in a year.
So we would have to look at revamping that policy then.
Well, you're revamping the policy for the fifteen-year-olds too, so that's why I'm.
Does the policy say no for six, no fifteen-year-olds?
No, it does not.
So we're not really revamping a policy.
We're just putting one in place.
We're, we're saying that we can, or.
I mean, if the pol, the policy doesn't say anything at this point about age of the employees.
Correct.
So we're not really changing the policy for that. We're not, there, there, there's no policy that's being changed, I mean, we, we're, it's a hiring, it's a hiring process, it's a legal hire to hire a fifteen-year-old. It just happens that there are more stringent requirements that we have to abide by for them.
They're bound, and, and just so maybe make sure everybody knows, they are required to have a break, uh, for so many hours worked in a day. They are, um, there are limits at different points in the season on how many hours a week they can work, how late they can work, and how many hours in a day they can work. And that varies depending on what point in the season you're at.
It's Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Correct.
They can work till eight, they work till nine.
That's your fifteen-year-olds.
That's my fifteen-year-olds.
Have you ever come across this where, uh, say if your eighteen-year-olds needed a day off and they couldn't get one of their own age to fill in, splitting their shift with two fifteen-year-olds?
Well, if that's put in place, they wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, well, like Teresa said, they just worked their.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's going to.
Or like what happened last year, we would just have, we would just have to close like the slides.
I had that question before you come up with that, and pretty well answered my idea.
I mean, I think that would probably be the.
How long on most days do you operate with eight guards?
Four to five hours. One to five.
So after five, you start gradually reducing below eight hours.
Take them, because that's, that's summer time. That, that pulls, I mean, you're, you're talking ten to fifteen people past the time of six-thirty, and then it's like one to two until eight. So then I only have two guards there just to, just to be there, so. And then granted, if there's like extra cleaning or training we can do, we'll keep them.
The idea behind the hundred hours issue was there needed to be some kind of stipulation to identify someone who basically earned, um, a response. There was another stipulation of that too, it wasn't only a hundred hours. It was a hundred hours and they stayed through the season. In other words, they had to get the blessing of the, uh, of the pool manager, uh, to say that they qualified to receive the reimbursement. If the pool manager did not recommend a reimbursement, um, there was not one put forward.
There's no law saying we have to reimburse.
No, no.
Any other further discussion on the pool?
So the, um, so the employee handbook would clearly outline that the fifteen-year-olds would only have their three and a half hour times.
Their three and a half hour shifts without switching from, I'm, I'm trying to rewind everything I said, so.
And it would clearly outline that if someone were trying to get a replacement.
Can't get a fifteen-year-old.
You would not be able to get a fifteen. He would not be able to get a 15-year-old. Would outline that that would be termination.
By both.
By both. And, but, but, but they-
We're just trying to put the fear of God in there.
Hopefully they're smart enough that they aren't gonna do that.
I mean, I'm scared, I mean-
Put the fear of God in there, you gotta do that.
I mean, it is not like they have a tattoo that says, "I'm 15," so I mean, you know, probably knowing, are any of these people going to turn 16 in the course of the summer?
No. They're all December babies, it's weird. Gee, what happened in March like here?
You got a mold over his neck, huh?
No. I tried harassing her and scaring her, giving her a lot of money, and she didn't, she didn't go for it. I even got her friends in on it.
I, I do have a, another question, I noticed on here you have Ally Mountenoch put in at four hours at 8:75, but for instance, you have Sidney in here with five years of service at $8.50. Can you kind of address what the discrepancy there is?
With Madison, Megan, and Sidney, those are not at our pool. That's why I gave Ally a little higher, because those are all our pool, so I kind of gave a little more seniority since she's worked our pool that many years. I don't know if those are at or wrong, but-
I just wanted it clarified.
Yep.
I would move to approve the lifeguard staff as presented, subject to council review of a, of a, a guard handbook that, that we, we could see to help-
To knuckle down.
To help ameliorate some of the, the fears of, of dealing with the 15-year-olds, and clearly outlining what their, this is not a motion, I mean, that, that was the end of the motion, I mean, the handbook would clearly outline not only what their times of service would be, but I, my understanding is there things like chemicals and some of those kind of things that, that they wouldn't be able to do, even some of the normal cleaning supplies, and some of those types of things that would not-
It'd have to also include the corrective action measure if they-
Yeah, the correct, yeah, corrective action.
Right. So I guess I would, I would move to hire-
Big bold letters, you will be fired.
To hire the list of guards as proposed, subject to council review of, kind of, of a lifeguard handbook, and hopefully maybe in our next meeting either.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I can type that out.
But would you want the identification of the 15-year-olds in there, so that everyone knows who?
All the $8 and-
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, I-
I said that the other courage-
Are you talking names listed?
I think, I think the handbook itself probably shouldn't include names if-
I think they know who they are.
But I should, I mean, I think you can do it-
All of the kids know each other. They know who's what age.
But I think that a handbook would be one that would be a policy that you shouldn't have to rewrite it totally every year for that. So I mean, so I mean, you could put in the dead of to it, saying, yeah, these are the 15-year-olds, for your information. No, this is, this is fire bait or whatever, but I mean, you know.
So we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Sandy, you wanna call roll?
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
No.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion Perry?
So, so that, they can't really, because it is subject to our review, they can't really be notified they're hired until we review them.
Until we review it. Yeah, I didn't know if it was possible to send that type of recommendation with the letter that you sent 15-year-olds?
Well, and I guess what I'm saying is, they are hired, subject to our review of that, so they're, so they are not hired yet.
Yes, yep, so no letters-
So they won't be hired until the next council meeting?
So, so nothing will be sent until we have reviewed-
When you bring your handbook.
Till we've reviewed the handbook, nothing will be sent to anybody as hired.
Okay, got it.
The list, the hiring of the list was subject to that.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 6C, consideration of hiring temporary full-time laborer one, Adam, if you want to adjust that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. We received applications from people who had previously done it, which gives us a great opportunity, we don't have to retrain individuals. So with that in consideration, I would recommend that we offer the positions to Cameron Marcheski and Tanner Crabbe. Cameron worked for us for two summers, I think, but did not do it last year, and Tanner worked for us last year.
And they're good workers too.
Yes. Uh, that'd be at $9 an hour, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we approve Tanner and Cameron.
I'll second it. Any further discussion?
And we have budgeted for two?
Correct, yes, that's what we had previously.
And with the start, do we need to do anything about the start time, are you gonna try and stagger them so we have them?
I would rather leave that a little bit open, so that I can work with them on their college schedules, and-
Because I know that there's a limit in hours and quarters and stuff, but I mean, you know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be monitoring that and taking care of that.
Okay, anything else? Sandy, you wanna have a roll call?
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
And we'll move on to item 6D, the second reading of ordinance number 2016-275, entitled in ordinance, amending the code of ordinances pertaining to chapter 75, all-terrain vehicles and snowmobiles.
I would move adoption of the second reading of ordinance number 2016-275.
I'll second it.
Okay, I, one suggestion I would make under item, uh, let's see, the unplowed, item number, section two, item number one, unplowed streets, uh, the last of that sentence says, plowed during the snow season and are impractical. You know, I'd, I'd say maybe some wording in there to the effect, travel on these streets is impractical, in other words, just the term impractical by itself is unclear. Okay, anything else? And we'll call for a vote, Sandy.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion Perry.
You could, uh, well, if you would like to consider, um, this change in language, because that was not included in the motion, I would recommend you wait till a third reading and include it into the language at the next council meeting. Because it was not included in that, in that process right there. Because the motion in second was made before the proposal was made.
Okay, one, one other item, too. The publication of each one of these, what, what does that run, you'd mentioned that?
Sandy can probably give you a much clearer picture, or maybe even Dale could. What, what do we typically pay for an ordinance?
I believe the ordinances are like 45 cents a line.
Okay.
At six-point type in our column size.
So would you say that $40 to $50 is a fair assessment of that, or?
That's just a good time. Still longer.
I bet it's not that long.
So the reason I bring that up is, you know, there's a process of a firm that does codification, runs the fee for upgrading all of our codes to be consistent with state law, uh, you know, runs about $1,000 to $2,000. You know, rather than doing each one of these individually and incurring, you know, the expense of publication and so on, maybe have a subcommittee go over all the ordinances, review them, come up with wording, you know, and certainly subject to, you know, council review as well. Maybe doing that as a summary and presenting that, that subcommittee presenting it to the council, and then to the codification company to incorporate all that in, in one, one shot, rather than doing it piecemeal.
That way you'd have one publication cost for the entire process.
It doesn't have to go in local papers, it could just, it just has to be publicized, or what?
No, it, I mean, it has to, but what they do in those type of cases is they do a publication that says, you know, the city is updating their code book. The code book is on, is open for display, they don't actually list out every ordinance.
So you'd have that in the paper, and that's it?
Yes, and that's it.
Save you a lot of money.
Saves us a lot of money. I, I mean, you pay for the codification, but the, the advantage of the codification is you make sure that it's consistent with state code. The weakness of the codification process is, is that they, you know, if you have little things like some of the stuff we've been changing here, um, you know, they're not gonna change Highway 20 to read Main Street. Those are the type of things that you have to deal with on a local level. And so if you were to incorporate that in with their changes, I, you could accomplish both at the same time, and only end up paying for one publication cost, one codification cost, and get all of that work done at one time.
If, if we were to develop a subcommittee, is there any committee within the council that that would be most appropriate to if we did that?
Um, not really.
Okay.
Not off the top of my head, I can't think of a committee, can you, Sandy, think of a committee that it would fall out?
I mean, obviously it would break down, because, you know, you've got ordinances that directly affect like utilities, and then it would go with individual people that are, you know, have each utility, so you'd really have to break it up.
Sure.
I'm not saying you couldn't maybe break the ordinance up and have different people look at different sections.
Perhaps establish a committee to look at it, and they could in turn say, all right, so in the area of the police, let the police committee look at that and talk about it with the police people, I mean, but, but establish an oversight committee that's, some of that, that's gonna be pretty good at taking notes, figuring out what is there, and-
I, I would say, you know, like you say, an oversight committee, but probably that oversight committee to go through each one, rather than, let's say, having another committee over with the police, you know, that, I guess that would, that would delay the proceed-
Focus of the group would not be code compliance, because that's the purpose of the Iowa codification. They're going to make sure you're code compliant. It would be more on the Main Street, it would be more on the-
The wording, the verbiage.
Yeah, different verbages.
If yours would want to be more, more detailed than what the state would be, I mean, you know, you wanna possibly make it even stricter than what the code would be, that would be something.
That would, that would be a money-saving thing, that would be a good thing to do.
Does anyone want to volunteer to serve on the committee, or are we, let me ask this, are we in agreement of setting up a subcommittee for this purpose? Anyone willing to serve on the committee?
I would. Yeah.
Anyone else? I should probably have two.
Please, I have a subcommittee of one.
If we could get three, I would be number two, but if, that way they would have an alternate.
So you said yes?
If it's a third person, I would do that, if they, if we have three people on it.
We can't do three.
Well, Tom and Scott could make three.
That's what he gets for not being here.
I know, that's just wrong.
Poor Adam.
I mean, or Adam could be a third member of the committee, I mean.
Actually get to vote in the committee, that would be scary.
Now, come on.
I already wrote down Scott's name, I'd hate to have to replace it.
Oh, that's good. We all do it for you.
Well, we, should we, let's, let's leave it, should we ask Scott, or is anyone else?
Well, we had to volunteer.
Well, actually, neither Scott nor I count as quorum, so-
Yeah, no.
Right.
So it could be a, it could be a four-
We could both be on there.
It could be a four-person committee with Scott and Adam and Tom and me.
Yep.
And if Scott's back, willing to do that, we'll re-approach the council, is that sound good?
Yep.
Are you making that appointment then, as mayor for town?
Pending the acceptance of the mayor, that's up to, I'll, I'll let that be his call, and if, and if he does not want to do it, then let's have him bring it back to the council. Because I really don't like to make appointments of somebody who is not here to defend themselves, or him or herself, I should say. So Scott will have to voluntarily go, okay? All right. Okay, we'll move on to item 6E, the second reading of ordinance number 2016-276, entitled in ordinance, a stop sign at the corner of South 13th and Lee Streets. Any discussion on that?
Has there been any input on this at all?
No.
If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a, a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Sandy, you wanna call roll?
Councilperson Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yeah.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion Perry.
Can we waive the third reading of this?
Yeah.
I would, I would move to waive the third reading of ordinance number 2016-276.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the waiving of the third reading? If there's no further discussion, call, call roll on this, Sandy.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion Perry.
Okay, and we'll move on to item 6F, discussion on funding for street improvement projects, and this is just a discussion, no decision-making is gonna be taking place. No, Bruce, you had come up with a summary of that, how do you want to handle it? Do you want to make any comments, or should, should I turn it over to?
Let him jump right in.
Okay.
Okay, so in your packets, there's a street financing discussion, and first of all, just if you turn to the third page of it, thankfully I play piano a little more accurately than I type, uh, looking at the third bullet point, uh, it should read 1,250 instead of 1,350 at the second line from the box. The third page should read the, should read 1,250 instead of 1,350. I really can do math better than that, I just, so what, I guess what this is, is kind of a, a summary of what we have in front of us, which, the aging infrastructure, the aging streets, their reality, and in some ways, I think-
Can I inter, intervene here? I'm, I'm a late comer, I see people reading stuff, do you have an extra one?
I believe there was some, was sitting over there in the-
This is just the, um, agenda.
I might have one, maybe. You can borrow. I will.
I'll, I'll move down here.
Sorry, I, I made, I made a few extras out of where they went. Bearing in mind that whatever we do probably is never going to please everybody, I just tried to outline a little bit of what's here. Historically, we've had special assessments, we've had general obligation bonds, we've had farmers getting tax credits for coming in and working on the streets with their horses and their, and their plows, and so the first paragraph is just a little bit of summary of that, but it seems to me that we have three major questions in front of us. The first is whether we want to use any form of special assessment, or go pretty much straight with general obligation bonds. And that's number one on that page. And then, secondly, if special assessments are used, do we want to use this as a percentage to the owners of the, of the cost of the project, or cap it as a percentage of the valuation of their property? There's a state mandate that we can't go over 25% of the assessed value of the property, not tax of all the assessed. So if you have a $100,000 home assessed, you cannot have an assessment more than $25,000, unless, looking at number three, items of direct benefit to you, which would include things like if you get a new sewer line, if you have a driveway put in, those can be assessed directly to the property owner, and that's, that has no bearing on the 25% cap. Now, there would be some instances with some homes where you might have a higher assessment than actually what the home was worth. But those are kind of the three areas we need to look at. If we look at the second page, there's some advantages and disadvantages to- to each one. I tried to outline them. Sometimes, you know, what may be an advantage to one person is a disadvantage to another person. The general obligation bond fund, um, may be the most palatable for the community. Uh, it's easier to administer and adds no real additional cost to the total project because assessment does, I mean, there is some other cost involved with it. It's virtually litigation-proof and aligns with the method that many of the areas, cities do use for there. And I think probably most of the cities in the county use that. But disadvantage, it uses more of the city's bonding capacity. It may take longer to pay for a project. There's a greater in tax increase for everybody in the community. It may limit the use of special assessments for future projects and tax-exempt organizations pay nothing for it because they don't pay taxes. The project-based special assessment will spread the cost of the project more equally among property owners. It's perceived as being more equitable, allows for more frequent projects than simply relying on geo-bonds. It uses less of the city's bonding capacity, preserves special assessments, and projects can be paid off a bit faster than using general obligation bonds. Disadvantage, it may pose a greater hardship on some property owners who are less able to afford it. I think this, I put that in there particularly if you're talking about percentage of the project spread out. If you have a $30,000 home, you know, maybe the people don't have quite the income. It might, it, it may not be quite as equitable that way. Unimproved, underimproved properties will simply less than what would be there because we can't go over the 25% in any case. Properties of lower assessment would have greater difficulty recovering the assessment if they were to sell it. Um, it's hard, it's, if you've got a $30,000 home, it's probably harder to justify that you have a 25% increase by getting a new street in front of your home. Um, assessments are subject to court litigation and review. It could negatively impact the tax-exempt organizations. If you have a church that has a $20,000 assessment, that might be a real major hardship for them to do that. And it maybe isn't politically the most popular choice. I'm not saying that we have to go on what's popular. I'm just laying some stuff out. Um, the property-based assessments may bring in more money than the special assessments if we're going just on the basis of the property. Be easier to justify recovery and cost of resale, allows for more frequent projects, basically the same advantages as the rest of it. One of the disadvantages, it may penalize people who have actually improved their projects, their homes. You know, so I mean, so I put in a $100,000 in my house, why should I have to pay more for the street than the person next to me? Um, it may be perceived as being inequitable. Unimproved properties pay very little, but basically this is the same thing that would happen either case because of the 25% state cap. Um, like any assessment, it could be subject to court review, could negatively impact tax-exempt organizations, and it's not necessarily the most popular. The numbers of interest, if we go to the next page, um, basically any special assessment that brings in less than $100,000, we might as well forget it. Because that's, you know, it kind of takes about that amount of money to get, to, to determine, to administer. Um, the last street project that failed had about $800,000 of assessment dollars that was, were built into it at the 25% level. If special assessments are based solely on property values, based on the current property tax rates that we have right now, which is 38,515 per thousand, and that's, that includes all the countywide taxes. Each 1% of property value that we would base this on. So what I'm saying is if we had a $100,000 house, you would be, have $1,000 that you would contribute to an assessment. Yep. That actually will increase the property taxes about 5% for 10 years if you're looking at 10-year repayment back for that. And that's pretty constant. What, I mean, that is totally constant. So, so if your property taxes were $1,000 a year with just the assessment, it would be 1,250 a year. The $2,000 a year would be 2,500 a year. I mean, that's just, and that did not figure any interest into there because the last proposal did have people paying interest if they spread their assessment over the 10-year period. Um, the project percentage based on the tax, uh, the, uh, of the, uh, percentage of the project would have, this is kind of a similar thing. Uh, kind of as a point of reformation, sorry, information, um, for every $100,000 of general obligation bond that the city assumes, bearing in mind that the projects would include perhaps some utility dollars that would be there because if we're redoing sewers, if we're redoing gas, water, some of those would come, not so much out of a geo-bond, but they would come through a different source. They would come through the utilities. The, based at a 3.5% interest rate, a 10-year payback, and I think that's maybe a little overreaching in the interest rate. I see that Fort Dodge has got a 1.17 interest rate. So the, but $28,000 a thousand would be the increase for every $100,000 of bonding. So if you bond for, um, if you bond for a million dollars, it would be $2.80 a thousand. It would be the increase to every property owner in the community. And if you're looking at assessments and that, the people who are assessed would have their increase in taxes to pay back the general obligation bonds and the assessment. So, I mean...
They're getting double whammy.
They're, they're getting double whammy. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying anything, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not, I don't even know where I sit on this for sure. The Flint formula, which I know last time was something that people didn't even want to hear about, but it is the only really method that has been used in court and held up to determine percentage of value for the project. And it's basically based on the amount of frontage you have with the property and how far you are away from it. It's a logarithmic function that, so, uh, example, where I live, part of my property is within half a block of Ninth Street. So I was being assessed for what was happening on Ninth Street, but it wasn't a whole lot of money because I'm quite a ways away from there. Now, Eighth Street was one of those there and I had bought it. So that, that was a half-year assessment because I was closer to it. But any assessment, we would have to determine what the potential value is for that particular property to do it because you can't assess more than what the perceived value is. I mean, we could say, we're going to assess 25% of the property's value, but if that doesn't have that benefit, we can't do it anyway. While we're setting as a maximum. And, um, based on the last proposed project, a property-based assessment, which I believe that one was, of 3% to 4% would be needed to meet the 100,000 minimum threshold. And, and finally, I mean, it's kind of a point of interest. A street project, if we're bonding, we could recover some in the general fund by repaying some of the engineering fees that were done last time that would still be applicable. And then there's one sentence on here that I just didn't, deleted as I went to the next page. The last page is just kind of a flow chart. My brain operates maybe differently than other people's, but it kind of lists what our questions are. Will we use special assessments? If no, we're kind of done. If yes, we need to go on and say, will they be based on a percentage of the property or percentage of property, or project of property value? And they're kind of outlined there. And then finally, at the bottom, will the items of direct benefit to the property owners be assessed to the property, sidewalks, utilities, driveway, et cetera? It seems that before we can really mount a street project, those maybe seem to be the questions that we need to address. And I tried to present just, just a packet of kind of information without saying, I support this, I don't support this, whatever's there. It was some information that I found helpful at least as I was looking at the, looking at the situation, trying to figure out where to go. And, um, not trying to be pushy, but sometimes, sometimes my brain, my brain needs some things on paper and some numbers that are there before I, you know, come up with, even knowing where to stand. And I've talked too much, but that, I guess that's what's in front of you at this point.
You know, I think too, we have to look at, you know, what project are we going to approach? Are we going to try the same, uh, you know, project as we did the last time? Personally, I think if we're going to redo a street, we need to address the, uh, infrastructure underneath it such as the, you know, sewers and so on. Uh, just addressing the surface, what's up above really doesn't address the overall problem. In fact, some of our back up in our sewers in the Ninth Street, you know, area, uh, were as a result of some of the infrastructure underneath, you know, the ground there. So that's a consideration. Another thing we should look at too, uh, is the Ninth Street, or the, excuse me, the North Fifth Street Bridge across the Raccoon River, uh, some of the deck, it's, is, the cement is eroding away, you know, small potholes there. And from what my understanding is, can you help me with this, Adam? If that, once that deck goes, then the infiltration of water into the steel within the bridge starts to deteriorate in what might have been a, let's say, $100,000 estimate would be about...
$80,000.
$80,000 to, to fix the deck versus 300,000 to 400,000 if we start talking about tearing the bridge out and doing, you know, steel infrastructure.
Wasn't, that's a farm-to-market road. Are we not discussing with...
Yes. In fact, one of the things I was going to make a comment to, to, kind of adding to Bill's statements is, is that two locations that I think the Street and Alley Committee, it's kind of sitting at hold to be a part of this discussion, once the financing arm is put into place, will be the inclusion of South Fifth Street and the North Fifth Street Bridge as potential also add-ins, uh, to a planned project. Whether that means we're taking other things out, putting that in, I can't, that's for the committee to decide. But I can tell you that the committee will hear from Tom Crabbe on both of those locations. We, um, are supposed to receive some numbers from the county engineer associated with South Fifth Street. I'm waiting for those numbers along with the breakdown of responsibility between the parties before I start talking to them about North Fifth Street Bridge.
And that we should be getting some statement for.
Correct.
I was going to say, because we're a detour too, so...
Correct.
So I mean, I think, I guess, my hope would be that we could come up with a method of financing street projects, maybe kind of moving forward and then, and then determine the scope of the projects after we come up with financing that. I know that's a little backwards, but I mean, that would be my hope, that we could, uh, solve, do, do that first hurdle and then, and then go to, if I'm going to buy a car, I kind of know what I want, what money I've got there to spend. And I think, uh, I know Tracy and I are the Street and Alley Committee. I think maybe if we have an idea of kind of the, the funding that is available, that it's easier to say, well, we think we can do six blocks or we can do 30 blocks. You know what I mean? Yeah. I mean, that's a, and, and with what kind of repetitiveness we can do it. I mean, though, I think those are kind of things and kind of coming up with a, maybe a longer-range plan for infrastructure and streets.
Well, I think that's a great idea because I think we need to be upfront with the financing and so people are aware instead of having it as the last thing that we did and everybody is, you know, is really upset. I mean, at least have it upfront and have everybody have an opportunity to discuss it and, you know, whichever way. I think that's the proper way to go myself.
And that was the last thing that was said last time, that, um, if you could look back in the minutes, that before anything else was brought up again, it was going to be determined and passed by resolution as to how the city as a whole was going to move forward with special assessments.
Now, now, once we get to the steps on Bruce's, uh, discussion here, which I think is laid out in the way that we need to move, I think the next step past this point is then we get into the discussion about talking about, i-if we do special assessment, would be the number, it'd be, be, okay, well, we're going to do property. Well, we've talked about percentages before. Well, what percentage would that be? Because I can tell you in just a little test of a bill and I did this week, 5% of the property value compared to 5% of the project cost are very different numbers.
Very, very different.
And so, once we get past the stages of Bruce's discussion here, then I can start to put numbers on paper to give you an idea so you guys can have some kind of thought in mind as far as where you want to set the percentage. Uh, but to set the percentage before knowing which method you want to move forward on.
Do you remember any of those numbers or not?
Um, well, uh, I think Bill, we understand this was a very generic...
Right, right.
...test we were doing. But I believe when we used the two different methods, a $100,000 home under one method at 5% was, and a $100,000 home after 5% of the other one was a difference in, uh, paying a full $25,000 and paying $5,000. It was a $20,000 difference in the special assessment. That's how big the, was that not the case, Bill?
Right, it was, on a, on a $100,000 home, under the, uh, let's see, the, uh, project limited to 5% of the project was, uh, five, let's see, that, that was the 5,000, or no, that, that was the 25,000 one. Versus the, based on 5% of the assessed value, then the lower-cost $100,000 home paid 5,000. On the other hand, a very highly, uh...
A million-dollar home.
A million-dollar home would on the one hand pay, uh, let's see...
I think it was 250,000 either way.
Right.
I don't think it made a bit of difference.
Well, but bearing in mind that we have to go back and use the Flint method or something to demonstrate what...
And there's an assumption built into this about the Flint method. I mean, that's why I, I really want to preface this by saying, we have so many moving pieces right now, it's hard to do a model like this. But if we can kind of shore down the issues on Bruce's sheet here, it gets a lot easier for me to hammer down some of the variables so you know, um, I, I can tell you just based upon the variables reran, I'd rather pay 10% of my value than 5% of the, uh, project cost. You know, it, it, it's less, it's a higher percent, but it's less money when you pan it all out.
And that, I mean, I guess, but I mean, we can't assess more than what the determined value of the project would be through the Flint method somehow. And, um...
And we made a determination, I believe, of comparable Flint method. I think that was a, a constant in our, in ours is what the Flint method, uh, result was, but...
There's no grants or anything out there that we can apply for?
Um, what we would likely have better luck with, Teresa, when it comes to street projects, I mean, rise grants are the ones, things that always come up, but this isn't going to qualify for a rise grant. A rise grant is for job development and you have to have proven jobs against it in order to qualify. I mean, we're not going, I mean, you're not going to be able to sell the, that's usually only allowed in the terms of, we're building a new business, it's going to create 10 more jobs, you're going to build a road to supply to this business and you get a rise grant for that road. The state will come in and help you with a rise grant.
For example, if we were to do a road to the industrial park.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. And I think, uh, Lakeview, for instance, got a rise grant associated with the building of the hotel because it created so many jobs. Um, just to give you an example. The, uh, the, probably the, the more likely route for us to be able to entertain will be controlling the interest rates. Because when we just started the discussion back in 2012, the expectation of the interest rate, if I remember right, and Sandy, correct me if I'm wrong, we were thinking like 5.5%. And I, I don't think there's any question today, we could do better than the 5.5%. But, uh, in fact, we could probably do significantly better than the 5.5%. But there is an example of a place where I think there's a better opportunity for money savings than getting a grant. They, I'll be just real honest with you. I know a lot of people think grants are the answer to everything, but in the case of street projects, I can get hundreds of thousands of dollars for an airport, but you'd be lucky to get a dime for a street.
Don't make sense.
No, it doesn't.
You know, Bruce and I attended a, a grantsmanship seminar out at the Iowa State Extension about a week ago. You know, and there were a number of different sources that you could Google and, and run a query on them. Uh, did you pick anything up that might fit into this?
Well, I, I talked to the presenter afterwards. I said, so do you have any idea, any good insights for like infrastructure repair? And she laughed.
Yeah.
And said, stand in line. Everybody else wants the same thing.
And, and I think that's the crazy scenario we've got in place. Everybody knows it's the white elephant in the room. It's the place where we need grant money the most. And it's, but the need is so high that anything they would put in place is a drop in the bucket. I mean, like for instance, this gas tax. This gas tax, what cities got out of this gas tax, most cities, was a drop in the bucket to what you need to dealing with your issues.
You'd get what, 32, 33,000?
Yeah, a little over $30,000 a year. That would pave a, a... That would pave a, a, one side of one block once every ten years. I mean, it's, if you didn't spend it on anything else. I mean, it's just, it, it doesn't do anything, and.
Well, it does, it does thirty thousand dollars worth, but it.
Thirty thousand dollars isn't a lot anymore.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot if it's in your checking account, but it's not a lot if you're doing a street.
Yeah. And, you know, the, and, an alternative that was discussed last time, and it was abandoned after the discussion, was, there was a discussion about create, going, taking to the people a vote to create a capital improvement taxation. Problem with the capital improvement taxation is, is it's capped by the state on what you can collect on that. And for our collection, the maximum amount that could be approved and collected is about thirty thousand dollars a year, which, we're back to that thirty thousand dollar number again. It, that would just be, honestly, that would be no different than a general obligation, to be all honest. All you're doing is passing it on to your taxpayers once again. So it's no different than a, than a taxing activity. In fact, I would argue general obligation is probably more advantageous in that process than the capital process.
You know, another thing to consider, too, you know, if we were doing a three million dollar bonding, and it's come up that it would take probably seven years for us to do another major project if we don't use special assessment, what, three point five years or something?
I wanna get, I wanna get away from that a little bit, Bill, simply, because those are based on old numbers. And, and I don't think it's fair to start, I'm, I'm guilty of that. In fact, I think I told a couple of the council members of that. I've been guilty of being, of using those numbers, but those numbers are based upon two thousand twelve, thirteen information, and they're, and it's, it's not accurate. I can't give you accurate numbers until we start putting, we get much more shored up on the financing side about what we'd be looking at. But I would say it, it would be somewhere consistent with that. I would say that, I wouldn't say those would have changed significantly, but they would have probably changed at this point. And it also, I mean, if we add on the bridge, and we add on South Fifth Street, and the city takes on a significant portion of that cost, and we don't take things out, or we change, also include Ninth Street as a total replacement, and we do this all as general obligation, I would say ten years probably wouldn't be a, a safe number then, because we're putting quite an additional amount of money into the project. So, and that's pure speculation on my part.
Ten years shall have more streets and more infrastructure falling apart if you wait that long.
You know, I mean, I think that.
Can't do that.
I guess, my hope is that we could come up with something that is a, a combination, but with a very moderate, moderate assessment, that would help with a little bit of the repetitive nature, and yet, perhaps, not, I mean, I know personally, the last project, my property taxes would have more than tripled.
At, at the maximum amounts.
Correct.
Well, I mean, at the, e-even without the maximum amount, because depending on what was there, I mean, if you want, if you want half, half of the maximum amount, depending on what was there, because the less that you did that, the more that you were doing general obligation bonds, so then, the higher that the, the higher that the repayment would have been for everybody. So, I mean, and I think that, I mean, those that are in the assessed area, we, if we look at the figures, we are in an economically repressed area. I mean, I know that most of us probably, I, I wish I were a little more food-challenged, I might not have this body shape. But we have a number of people in the community who are significantly, they don't know for sure even where their next meal is coming from. And I think, too, I mean, I hate to, to, to burden them to the point, but they can't even afford to live here. And I'm afraid that, I mean, going from a hundred dollars a month to three hundred dollars a month in property taxes, that, that can become really, really significant in special, you know? And that, I think, would be, I, I would, I guess, the humanitarian side of me would have a really hard time supporting, supporting that. Now, having some form of assessment that was much more moderate than that, and I think maybe my personal preference would be to do a very moderate assessment that was property value-based more than percentage of the project-based, and that would be my personal preference, but.
Property-based versus, okay.
Property-based versus project-based. That would be my personal, that would be my personal preference, but, I mean, well, my personal preference would be able to fix all the streets and not have to raise taxes. And, you know, just have someone come in with, with their, you know, the bewitched lady come in, wiggle her nose, and we have all brand-new streets.
That proposal would reduce the obligation bonds to a percentage where we might be able to do something in a shorter amount of time.
Right. So I mean, so it might, so it might, because the money that we take for special assessments doesn't count against our bonding capacity, even though we would do general obligation bonds on it, because it's a different fund source. So we would do a general obligation bond, so if we said we were going to bond for, let's say, three hundred thousand dollars of the project, that would be three hundred thousand dollars less that we would be taking away from the, I mean, assessed for three hundred thousand, I mean, three hundred thousand would be taken away from the general obligation bond portion of it. So it would, let it come back a little more quickly, and I guess it probably depends on your definition of a major project. If we did something, two and a half million, maybe coming back in four years, able to do another million worth, you know, maybe, you know, they, and, and kind of doing the math on that, and as Adam says, it's hard to, you know, there's so many moving pieces that are floating around in this, that it's really hard to get an idea of, it's sort of like looking at kaleidoscope and wondering exactly what's gonna fall next.
How much was the last project that we looked at?
I believe once we got the bids in, and with all the other fees associated with it, we were looking in the neighborhood of about two and a half million dollars.
On, on the last one?
Yes.
Steve.
I don't know if this is for citizen speak, but I'm gonna interject. I'm kind of the elephant in the room. Everybody knows me from the last one. I didn't miss one. You really pissed me off, and Mr. Hanson.
Well, we'll use, we'll use, let me interrupt you. We won't use those terms in the discussion here, it's gonna be a civil discussion.
But, but my point being, why I wanna interject, so you quit wondering why I'm here. We've had a lot of this, how do we pay for discussion involving more than just me, it involved that whole room being packed, this whole room being packed. You had letters, you had phone calls, you had current council members that were on the other side of the coin. And so I'm just saying, keep all of what happened last time, not just how did we plan on spending more money, but remember how it affected a large part of the town. And I will agree with you that the town is not growing. Most of us, if you look at the downtown, we've all turned sixty-five when we retired. I was lucky enough, I got a young man to take over what my business was. Some of the others aren't gonna be so lucky. Hopefully, they will, where we can see the future. But if you're gonna start spending in the future, start remembering that the town's getting older, and those of us that quit working saw our salaries drop sixty or seventy percent. So when you come up and you say, well, it's only twenty-five percent of this or that, well, I'm down seventy percent of what I used to make. So I don't just, I just paying for a sewer, the school doesn't even ask you, so I really don't wanna use all my good arguments, but they just do it. Here's your twenty-eight cents times a thousand, whatever. The school just does it. If you need more garbage, you raise the garbage, you raise the yellow tags, you do this and that, people just bump along and you get with it. But if you start handing out sheets that say, burn seven hundred, it's Flat Street, you're gonna owe seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, because that garbage dump you got in the backyard is a big yard, and the law says we can do this to you. Pardon me for taking care of my house, for one thing, as was brought up earlier. Pardon me for having a garbage dump that goes deeper into my backyard than most people's backyards. I will thank you for getting my piece of cement in my driveway fixed, because I did complain about that last twenty years to get that thing fixed. I now have that fixed, so thank you. But I am right on the cusp. If you go look at all your phonins, that you can go back two Sundays ago, and I'll put in a pat on the back for Tom and Jason, my sewer backed up, which it does quite often. And anyway, it was a Sunday, I couldn't wait till Monday. Tom got hold of Jason, he, he took care of the problem. Wonderful. And, and as, as he's watching it, I mean, we had backed up, I can't tell you how far. And he says, you know, you must have a flat spot here. Well, so I'm one of those that really wants this sewer thing, just, I, I've paid for more roto-ruder than most.
That's thirty minutes.
And.
Okay.
Whatever. So I, but I did not appreciate getting handed a bill for eighteen thousand, just because of where I lived. When everybody drives on the street, everybody's poop goes down the toilet, it goes somewhere. And it's no different, and everybody goes to school, everybody uses the water treatment plant, you spread it out through the town, because we're, I don't care if I don't drive on North Fifth or whatever, but we all drive on something. So fix them, spread it out for all of us at twenty-eight cents or whatever. Slow down your spending, because we're not making any more money here unless you see something on the future, and quit getting us all in debt and worrying about how to spend more of it. Some of us would like to.
Steve, I'm, I'm gonna.
Save some money.
I'm gonna interrupt you, we tried to let, you were a little bit late coming to the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, just remember what all went through here a year ago.
Good.
And it wasn't a happy time.
Thank you for, for your comments.
The last time the, we talked about the project, it was, or the streets, it was done by figuring percentage of the project, right?
No, it was a percentage of the property. What was sent to the residents, and this was on the advice of both the architects and the attorneys involved with the project, is that in your initial report that you sent to the homeowners, you cannot exceed what you include in your initial report. So what was included in the initial report was, barring the Flint calculations, was the maximum evaluation that a property could be assessed as part of the project.
So it was the twenty-five percent?
Barring the Flint.
The.
Correct.
The assessed value.
Correct.
Is there any possible feasible way, and I'm just asking this because that's what Doc just said, but there's no way, other than doing the, just for my clarification, the, the vote to the people to tax everybody, right?
The general obligation bond.
The GO would tax everybody.
The GO bond would, would affect everybody's property tax.
Correct. Whatever portion is put into general obligation, and general obligation would be included either way.
Right.
Whatever portion is being included into general obligation would be assessed to all properties except your non-taxing bodies, your churches, your city, your school, your county, your post office, your, any entity that doesn't pay property taxes would be exempt from being included in the assessment, and that would build on the deficiencies of the, of the project.
What, what did, what should be our next step, do you think?
At some point, we have to answer, one, are we going to include special assessment as a portion of it, and, as Bruce has pointed out here? And two, if we are going to, initially, we need to come up with a conclusion on whether or not that's going to be property or project revenue. And once we can do that, then I can start putting pen to paper and start giving you numbers, so you guys can then work out a percentage of whichever of those versions you wanna work, move forward with.
And at that point, it's all subject to change, it's just for informational purposes to make our best decisions.
Well, once you would have your percentage determined, we'll do a resolution, basically saying that the council has agreed that moving forward with street projects, this is how we're going, this is the model we're going to use to pay for. Then after that, that gives the Street and Alley Committee what they're asking for, which is how we're gonna pay for it, so they can then determine what they are going to propose to be a part of the street project.
Do we wanna set any timeline on that, or what?
I, personally, I feel that no decision we make is gonna be popular. It'll be, but I think the one decision we will make that will be the least popular is doing nothing, because our aging infrastructure is exactly that, it's aging, and it's not getting any younger, like any of the rest of us. And I think that it's easy for us to procrastinate, it's easy for us to avoid making a decision, but I think to avoid making a decision is also making a decision, which is that we're doing nothing. And I guess, I would hope that we could come up with something so that we can actually begin to propose a project and hopefully get some things moving forward, so we don't have things like a three hundred thousand dollar bridge replacement instead of an eighty thousand dollar cap. And that, you know, and that we can maybe tie some of these things together. And I would love to see us be able to do something even maybe late fall. I mean, you know, something, you know, something so that we don't have, so that we can say, look, we have accomplished this. I mean, I, I, as far as the timeframe goes, I'm not, I, I hate the vacuum cleaner salesmen who have to decide this today, but, I mean, I think.
I, I think perhaps just a timeline on when we're gonna come to the decisions as to, you know, whether it's gonna be project or property-based, whether or not we're gonna use assessment, that would be the next logical step, wouldn't it?
Yes. I mean, Bruce did a very good job of pointing out what the, what, what the initial steps we need to make. What is in front of us right now?
Well, I have to agree with Bruce, I would prefer property-based assessment. I mean, that would just be my preference.
I agree. That'd be the least.
That would be the least. We have to count, yeah, we have to compromise of people.
More friendly with the public.
Yes. Nothing like Bruce said, nothing's gonna be popular with them.
Right.
You can't please everybody, it's just life. But we do have to do something with our streets and our infrastructure, whether we have.
Actually, that would be cheaper than going the percentage of the project.
If we're comparing five percent to five percent, yes.
Yes.
It is, that's, of course, something I can sit down and, I mean, once you guys have kind of given me direction, I can start to tell you whether or not five percent makes sense, whether or not seven percent, whether ten.
You take five percent of a hundred thousand dollar property, is a lot less than five percent of a, say, a six million dollar.
Three million dollar project, yeah.
Yeah, the property-based will favor the lower cost or evaluated houses.
Right. And, and as far as the percentage goes, what, once I can come back to you with some percentage ideas, you can then let me, then you can kind of get an idea of what's too little, what goes below the threshold of what is financially feasible to do, and what is, in your view, beyond what you wanna do as far as a direct burden.
So I think, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Bill.
So I think it was gonna cost just a hundred thousand just to float the assessment portion, is that?
The filling was, is anything under a hundred thousand.
Probably seventy, seventy-five thousand of, you know.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess, what.
Yeah, those were the numbers we were.
The sense that I got, there's no point in doing a seventy thousand dollar assessment if I add seventy thousand to the project.
Well, a hundred thousand was the minimum of an assessment, assessment, that's reasonable.
I think, I think I outlined that in here, I believe.
But did it state the cost of doing the assessment for a hundred thousand?
No, no, because you and I did that as a model discussion. Bruce and I never went over those numbers as a model. This took place after my meeting.
This was me sitting at home one night, started typing going, okay, what's happening, what do I think? And then making you have to read it, sorry. So is there a consensus that maybe you would like Adam to look at some?
I'm hearing yes and property.
For some property assessment, would that be a consensus among the council?
I think it'd be more acceptable from the community. And then from the last time you guys did them letters, that was the most you could assess that you sent out.
Correct. The under, the way it was proposed to us is that whatever you send to somebody in an initial letter is the most they can be assessed. So if the cost of the project was to change significantly throughout the project, you would be bound, your assessment would be bound by what your original letter said. So it's their recommendation that the letter be sent with the maximum potential amount included.
You couldn't, you couldn't say, you like, say.
So what the point?
Seventy-five thousand dollar home is, you got to, well, say the assessment is, what, four or five thousand? Say if that's what they can be taxed, but this is what we're gonna assess you at. Like, say five percent of that.
It'd be very difficult to put variables in a letter.
Well, and the fillings of the attorney was, is that you're creating doubt. You're creating doubt on whether or not, they could challenge whether or not that, you were creating doubt and whether or not that was potential of an assessment or not.
I think it should be known on what this is based on, though, that it can fluctuate.
Because truly, honestly, you're not gonna know what the costs are until you get that, a good cost is going to be, until you get the bid in.
And engineers are always going to guesstimate high, real high, hopefully real high.
I don't remember exactly, so don't quote me on this. But I think we got farther, far enough along in our project last time that we had figured that the assessments were going to end up being in the neighborhood of about seventy percent in most cases of what was sent to the homeowners. So if you were sent one saying your assessment was gonna be ten thousand dollars, generically, I can tell you, we were thinking internally, it was actually gonna end up being around seven thousand dollars. But that was based upon what we knew our engineering, what cost was going to be. We knew what our bonding cost was gonna be. And we knew what our, we had a bid in from our, from a contractor. So, but the problem is, by the time you have all that in, the letters had to have been sent six, you know, four months in advance.
And here's, and this is what hurt, you know, this is what made it so difficult the last time. Those letters go out and somebody sees that maximum value. That's all of a sudden is what it becomes. You know, and education didn't make any difference in terms of how it was looked at.
That's why I was wondering if maybe if it could, how you worded ain't gonna make no difference. You're gonna see that top dollar, and that's what we're gonna have to pay. Instead of, this could cost you up to this amount. They don't see them words.
And actually, we, the letter was written by the attorneys. We didn't put any pen to paper on it. This is a process that is, has so much opportunity for litigation that you hand it over to those who know how to do the process. And that's why it's so costly, that's why we talk about the seventy-five thousand dollars to do this, because you've got to bring those attorneys in, and they basically, between the engineers and the attorneys, they guide you through the entire process, they draft everything. You know, our, we manage it, we monitor it. The biggest challenge for us in the office was putting the names together, the contact numbers together, I mean, all of the mailing lists together. I mean, that was probably the biggest challenge to us in the initial stages. Then to review what they had done to make sure that there was accuracy within the methods that they, because the Flint method, of course, is based on improvement. Well, you gotta review where they say water lines are, where they say sewer lines are and things of that nature, make sure that's all accurate. So there was a lot of internal responsibility throughout the initial stages of the project. I don't know where I was going with that.
I guess.
I'm new, I, you know, I have a few questions here.
So, Adam, could you come back with some, at least, maybe a next step?
Sure, what I will do next with this type of consideration in place, I will take generic home concepts, a home of fifty thousand, a home of a hundred thousand, and a home of two hundred thousand. And I will, and I will, of course, the one constant game I've got to play is the Flint method, because I can't, I, I'll have to create a constant for the Flint method because each property would have a different improvement level on it, and I'm not going to know that. But I can at least say, okay, well, their improvement level at each house was constantly this. Here's the value of a fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, and a two hundred thousand dollar home. And based on that, here's what a five percent assessment of property value would be, a seven and a half percent, and a ten percent would be.
And we can't go any lower than five?
I just use that. Honestly, Teresa, what will dictate that is when I do that and we start to have some kind of ideas of what a hundred thousand would be. If five percent doesn't, doesn't look like it would come up to a hundred thousand based upon the size of the project, then a five percent.
Depends on the size of the project and the area where your project is.
Once again, the variables, there are so many variables here. We're closing some of them down, but there is still a massive amount of variables to putting an idea together.
Well, that'll at least give us an idea of numbers and figures and what we're looking at then.
Right, you'll have an idea of what a hundred thousand dollar home, how it would be impacted by this.
Yeah, Steve.
Could you, you talk about we're delaying this, so we gotta pay it faster and this and that. And again, it's a variable. But could you decide what all of your projects are? And then say, rough guessing costs, say, if we had blah blah blah, how much money do we need, how big a pile of money? And how it, because, and I know you asked for the opposite. But for those of us that are sitting here pondering, well, are they gonna do a one million dollar project, are they gonna do a two million? What are they holding off, are we holding off ten million? Or are we holding off three point eight million? And if you could at least give us caps, rough caps, nobody's holding anybody to the grind of stone, but.
Well, I think, I mean.
But, you know, if you keep saying, well, we're delaying projects, well, that doesn't mean anything. I'm gonna say I'm delaying the weather, that doesn't tell you. What are your projects roughly, is it Ninth Street, is it Platte Street, is it? You know, none of us want to lose a bridge. I walk that South Fifth nearly every day, so, yeah, it needs to be fixed. My sewer backs up twice a year, so, yeah, I like that. But is there something down your part of town? Is there something at your part of town? But if you could be a little more upfront, and I'll be honest with you, that's what the presidents are going through. Nobody trusts government anymore, because they always have this stuff that they're working on.
From a street standpoint, an assessment Tom and I did, Tom Crabbe and I did, we could not do our street needs with twenty million dollars.
Twenty million?
Yes. We could not do our street needs with twenty million dollars. And our bonding capacity is about three and a half million dollars.
So we're gonna have to choose and pick and realize that once we choose the project that we're going to, we know that we cannot proceed any further for quite some time.
Does three and a half billion get you your worstest spots?
Based upon.
Yeah, but then it's not gonna get us anything in the future. If we have our, like, ten more years, and then what, ten years?
Well, I guess, to answer your question.
Yeah, that's the only thing about doing that.
The need, the last major street project we did would have been twenty-some years ago, something like that, in some of the residential areas up by the Catholic Church, some of that area. But probably realistically, by the time we would get everything else replaced, that will need replacing too.
Well, my street was one of those in the, and it didn't work, I think that's why my sewer doesn't work, is because of what they.
So.
Anyway, I'm just curious what.
The, the, the size of the potential project is greater than what we can undertake at one.
And the twenty million is just roads. That's not even talking about the sewer lines, the water lines, or any of that underneath it. The infrastructure, this is, we can get into a long conversation, but this is a major national.
Flint, Michigan was there.
This is a major national problem. Many of our older communities are sitting on hundred-year-old sewer systems. Think, well, if we look at Flint and their water system, I mean, there are needs. We have, we went, we went through a generation of overbuilding our needs. And unfortunately, what that means is, is when you move into a shrinking society state, you run into a scenario where you no longer have the resources to maintain those needs. It's one of the reasons why sometimes if you've listened to the council meetings, you've heard me say, we, city shouldn't take on property, we should be trying to shed property. I, I'm an advocate for us doing anything we can to reduce our maintenance liability moving forward, because unfortunately, I think, I hope most people see the coming storm. And the coming storm scares me to death. Because, not just in this community, but throughout communities, older communities in our nation. Because we've got to address these problems, and there isn't the money there to address them.
Well, that project last year that didn't fly, and I realize it's not two million versus twenty, so it's ten percent. But how much of our worst stuff would that have covered?
The filling, the filling based on the JEO report was, that was the basis of how we determined what streets. There was a report done by JEO, God, that seems like that was forever ago now.
Which is an engineering firm.
Yes, I'm sorry. They came in, they did an analysis of the state of our streets. And we took that report, and we said, okay, based on the report, these are the streets that need the work the most. And so these are the ones, that's how we're gonna determine what streets we target. We're not gonna base it upon where a council member lives or where a city employee lives. We're gonna base it on what an engineering firm we paid money to come in here and do tells us. So that's what it was based on. And since then, of course, we have all seen what's going on with South Fifth Street. And of course, bridges are a whole nother ballgame. You know, a street goes bad, you deal with tens of thousands of dollars. A bridge goes bad, you're dealing with hundreds of thousands of dollars. So they tend to take a priority immediately when they have a need. Luckily, we basically have one bridge of concern. Our other two bridges have been replaced in relatively recent history, and that one is the one in need. So that's where South Fifth Street comes into the discussion as being a new need that was kind of, there was a next step in the JEO analysis that included South Fifth Street as one of the streets included in that JEO report at the next level. The fact of the matter is, we had to make a cut somewhere in the JEO report and say, okay, anything that graded less than this. I, right. And so the.
If you could take South Fifth out of current discussion and flip that over to the bridge.
We could, yes, we could do one, we could do both. And I could tell you that our maintenance superintendent will be encouraged just to including both into the project.
Well, we all want both.
South Fifth doesn't wanna make it much longer.
We need a bridge more than we need a road.
Well, I can drive down gravel better than I can water.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's a triage system, you have to look at it and see which ones can we save, which ones are we gonna let?
Savables and setters.
I would just soon not have to lose, as you can see, I'm still mad a year later, to get a bill for, and I don't care if you did come in less. There was a lot of arrogance last year. That man, the engineering man that said, this has been through the course. You know much that with ten cents is gonna get you towards a cup of coffee? Not too much, I don't like arrogance, I'm not stupid. I got eight years of college, I got thirty-five years of work. Talk to me like I know what I'm talking about. And don't give me this, you consume these crap. Because that's not what we're looking for, we're looking for answers.
We agree, that's what we're trying to get.
But I'm just saying, remember the anger that went last year.
So I will be happy.
It was actually.
Three years ago.
Three years ago.
I will start drafting up some information going with different percentages using the property method then.
And when are we gonna determine what we're gonna attack?
Well, once the percentage, once the, once you guys come to a determination on what you want me to draft up in a percentage to include in a resolution, once they know what's going to be in the resolution, then the real work of the street and alley committee, they get.
Bruce and I will become even better friends.
Maybe.
Not just because of you, Bruce.
Do you have anything else before we adjourn?
Water tower?
Oh, he just wanted you guys to see.
He just wanted us to see it?
You might, you might bring up the, you know, we're getting a good value here on top that I looked at as a little victory when.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna share this. But Jim got a call from the water company saying, oh, well, it's gonna cost an additional, I believe it was about twelve thousand dollars more than I told you. The quote I sent you is just for putting the logos on, it's not for also putting Sac City on there. You're gonna have to pay for that separate too, because that's a new silk tube. And, because it was a different design than the old Sac City that was on there too. Because we're not only changing the logos, we're also changing the way Sac City was written and colored. And so it's gonna cost you an extra twelve thousand dollars. And I will say, Jim went to fight for us and pointed out that they're a year behind on doing it. And so they had committed to honor their initial pricing and include all four paintings in it.
And including the Sac City as well.
So Jim deserves some credit for this work. You still have public input on solid waste and council forum before you commit your.
Right. Any information on public input on solid waste? None on solid waste, we'll move on to council forum. Is there anything else that anyone wants to address there?
I'd just let you know, if you call me and I don't return your message tomorrow or the next day, we have the Iowa Utility Board in here doing our gas audit. And then next Tuesday, we have the, we have, I, let's see, let me think about this for a second. IMWCA coming in to do their annual workman's comp audit. So I'll be fairly busy following auditors around those three days.
I thought you borrowed Bill's phone.
Okay, well, there being nothing else, I'll entertain a.
I would move to adjourn.
A second.
Sandy.